Let's start. I'd like to welcome everyone here. This is County Council, County Planning Commission Workshop. And today is Thursday, July 7th, 2022. And there's Paul. Welcome, Paul.
All right. Stand, now we can sit down.
And there's Tim. Okay, great. Welcome, everyone, and you can view it on YouTube if you'd want. All right. Any introductions or announcements, Tia? Or announcements, anyway, and we'll go around and do introductions.
Announcements is that we're, this is not in tomorrow, so tonight's the last day of the day.
Okay.
Oh, that's not, he takes the last day off.
Yeah.
What kind of commitment of...
Yeah, we'll miss it.
Very good.
But now we'll make up Scott Gordy here, so.
Hey, Gordy. Come on in.
Fishmaker, you ought to have me here.
Not according to the Herald Journal.
There's all kinds of problems.
There's only one seat right there for him.
Yeah, there's a seat here. All right, I'm Barbara Tidwell, Cache County Council.
Oh, Lane Parkery, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Brandon Spag, Planning and Zoning.
Paul Borup, Cache County Council.
Melinda Lee, Planning Commission.
Jason Watson, Planning Commission.
Chris Sands, current Chair of the Planning Commission.
Dylan Gunnel, County Council.
Dave Erickson, County Council.
Gordon Sellas, just arrived, County Council. I can't believe Chris Sands is still here. Chairman Sook.
He's been planning his zoning since 1976.
Thank you. Okay, here and then back here.
Mayor Harker, Mayor Harker.
Awesome. And way back there. What did she say?
Just interested.
Okay, good deal. All right, very good. I guess, Tim, what are we, you're going to go ahead and tell us about, who's going to talk to us about conditional use permits?
So I'd be happy to share some introductory thoughts.
Awesome.
I would totally, you know, give out some thoughts and concerns.
Now tell us how you really feel.
I was hoping the county attorney was going to come talk on some of these.
There he was, I thought.
Maybe he's late.
You brought that up, I thought he wasn't.
Yeah, make sure your green buttons are on, please.
Not that I wanted it, but.
Do you know?
You know, I can go check. I'll go check.
Hopefully.
I said all my inner problems.
Well, this is an international legal guidance.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go check for you.
And we put this item on the agenda first so that the water and land use conversation will follow. And I believe Will Atkins.
Will Atkins.
Will Atkins. About four o'clock. So just my introductory thoughts on conditional uses, they're sometimes very challenging. Sometimes there's a lack of clarity of how to muddle through identifying issues. And yet, if there is a land use that is permitted conditionally or permitted, then sometimes if there's not a very clear set of requirements and standards associated with that permitted land use, conditional use is probably a safer place to have it as a permitted use such that any impacts, any impacts to adjacent property owners could be identified, and then reasonable standards and mitigations provided as part of the requirements.
We sure stretched that out on the last CUP situation, so.
It was a challenge, indeed it was. And in fact, one of the action items for Planning Commission this evening is to look at amending one of the use definitions, the recreation facility, and consider amending that, not just in the definition of a campground, but also in the permitted table of land uses, that that could be changed and not allowed conditionally anymore in A-10 zone, but allowed conditionally in the forest recreation. And so that's an example of a tweak to the conditional use definition and/or whether it's allowed as a condition or permitted use or not allowed in a particular zone. And we've had a few good discussions with the Planning Commission, having recently experienced the challenge of looking at the impact of an RV campground adjacent to a community, and then anticipating and also receiving additional follow-up. Calls from other property owners or prospective owners and buyers saying, hey, we just heard about an RV campground approved, we're interested. Looking around the valley and felt that action might be best taken right away to address that. So that'll be on the agenda this evening. One other example I'll provide as the potential benefit of a conditional use is in our last workshop, joint workshop, we talked about the potential for a detached accessory dwelling unit. Our code only allows for an attached accessory dwelling unit. And a couple of concerns that were raised about the maybe potential risk associated with a detached is what if the property owners try to subdivide and sell, illegally subdivide, and then attempt to sell off that as a second unit? And then run down the code and restrict the property in terms of quite a mess. Just having a great discussion with Devron the other day, and I brought this up as from the recorder's perspective of how could this...
You're going to like it very well, don't you?
How could confusion of a detached accessory dwelling unit be addressed through every different type of recorded document process? And his thought was that this would be ideal as a conditional use because one of the conditions would be that the property owner record on the deed that the second unit is restricted to accessory use only. It's a different matter for the county to actually report an affidavit or a specific item against a property. And sometimes that can lead to some issues between owners and the county or the local government. But through a conditional use, that would be a voluntary action taken by the property owner and self-imposed, but only allowed through a conditional use process. So that's one upside to address that concern, an issue that was raised in our last meeting. If the review process reveals that, that's a good option, and an additional property right to add to a single-family zone. So a couple of examples.
How does that jive with the change in state code? Not this session, but the one prior where they basically said, you have the right to have a secondary dwelling unit.
So there are some specific criterias to different types of communities where it's required or not necessarily required for those communities to take action. And it doesn't necessarily require detached, but an attached A-10 unit would meet that state requirement generally. There's more to it than that that I'd have to dig up and present. But I think it's great that there is an attached option in the county. We receive calls frequently as to the potential for a detached unit. I think it's construction and home and land costs increased. They're interested in that second unit but don't necessarily want it attached to the home, but they feel that it could be a good investment and a means of additional income to help them pay their investment.
Yeah, we have, I mean, in Hyde Park City, we have that same thing. We have had internal ones allowed for a long time, and we just barely passed to have the detached ones. And so we had that same issue like with Devron, and you know, so I think we just took them off of being a conditional use. But ours can only, we limited the space of the second one to a thousand square, the living space to a thousand square feet. So, I mean, because we have a lot of older, smaller homes in Hyde Park, so that could actually be the accessory dwelling unit, and they could build their giant mansion behind it, you know, when they have these deep lots, and that wasn't something that we wanted.
Sure.
So we've limited ours, but we struggle with utilities, too. Do we charge for like water and sewer? It's a whole nother household. You know, if you had two apartments or a duplex, you would charge each of them the same. And Logan City requires garbage services be doubled, you know, that they each have cans. There's a lot of complications with that that we are still trying to figure out, too.
So just so I understand, is it possible to have, for example, Grandma's house on the 10-acre parcel? It's a thousand square foot, and then somebody buys that property and wants to build their bigger home back behind. It's 10 acres, is that...
That gets to a challenge to me.
Currently, no, that's what we're...
Taking the primary residence and changing it.
They live in it while they do, but they're not going to live it, you know, they're not going to... That's what we're going to, that's what we're facing in reality.
Well, that changes your whole scope of A-10.
It will.
It becomes two.
Yeah.
But in reality, that's what we're looking at here today, right? On this secondary dwelling, detached, I mean, it could be that or...
I briefly mentioned just that, yes, they would.
Hey, legal can't sit back there, you better be up here front and center, man.
Nice try, Taylor.
And I mentioned Devron's perspective. Through a conditional use permit, then the owners pursuing a secondary unit could self-impose a deed restriction that it's not to be sold off and always remain accessory to the primary single-family dwelling. So just pointing out that that's a strategic way to use a conditional use permit process that doesn't then require the county to record some form of affidavit or document against the property, but it's initiated by the owner. If I can just back up to the example of the RV campground and the tweaks to the definition and land use table in terms of what zone districts it's allowed in or permitted in or permitted conditionally. And that is that the Planning Commission has been discussing that there could be very limited RV campground, maybe one or two units, one unit per parcel as part of an ag tourism. So again, agricultural tourism, and really that needs a comprehensive rewrite and exploration of how the reindeer farms fit in, how to, could there be a small camping component to that that supports kind of the diverse income opportunities for a working farm? And, but until we fully understand all the potential impacts, it does take time to write the code and study all the impacts. And so a conditional use can be a placeholder so that those can be at least discussed in public forum or addressed.
So when we're looking at that land use table, is that type of a thing, is when it says ZC zoning clearance, that's the conditional use that we're talking about? Or what is zoning clearance versus conditional use?
Yes, zoning clearance would be permitted, and it just goes through, or P. Yeah, P would be zoning clearance permitted, and then it goes through a zoning clearance.
With staff.
Administered.
With staff. So it never needs to come before y'all.
Doesn't hit.
If it says ZC next to the use, a citizen can come in and say, here's what I'm trying to do.
It meets the requirements.
Okay.
Is there a time limit on those permits or anything, or no?
They're good for one year after approval?
One year.
Conditional use.
Both conditional and the zoning clearance are good for one year after approval.
Well, they're...
To take action.
Yeah.
But they stay with the property.
The conditions have to be met within that one-year time.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
A conditional use permit is forever once it's...
Okay, good.
Goes with the property.
Yeah.
So even if the property's sold, that conditional use permit is still there?
As long as the use continues. If it ever stops, then it stops. And the county's language is interesting about that.
But let's back up to there. Use and identifying or approving the use becomes the bearer of bad news as well, and that's why I'm hoping an enforcement officer is around to check these things. So look at that.
Enforcement can be a challenge because there are things that, you know, we could... Honestly, if we sat a trail cam out there, we'd probably discover that many of these uses have not been continuing, continuous for a period of over a year, in which case it should be revoked.
I think like a lot of enforcement issues, it's complaint-based, right?
Then it only gets looked at.
If there's a problem, somebody will complain about it.
But even when they complain about it, it's their word against their word, so.
Yeah, but that triggers the county, actually.
Right.
Doing something, at least looking into it.
And I think, you know, conditional... I think we all know if it's a controversial item, it's a conditional use permit, probably, that's come before us.
Absolutely.
Those are the only ones that we really, well, I shouldn't say only, but 95% of the time.
We have zoning changes that are controversial as well, but...
Those don't seem so hard. I mean, there's a lot of discretion associated with the zoning change as opposed to a conditional use permit. And so I think we should always be striving to limit those uses that fall under conditional use permit whenever possible.
By policy.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we, yes, by policy. Staff should be, you know, we should look at that table and, you know, ask ourselves every once in a while...
Do we really want this out in that zone area or whatever else?
Yeah, is there a different way we can handle a conditional use permit for this type of use? Can it be, can we clarify where it's permitted and not permitted so that we can do away with conditional use?
Can one of the conditions be a sunset clause? Be that it doesn't? Because I feel like on ours, we say if the property is sold, it doesn't continue. Is that illegal for us to say that?
Under, so under the state code, I'd have to look to make sure, but...
Because that's on ours, that it won't continue upon sale.
That may be an inconsistency.
Well, when you get to a detached unit, are you saying you have a detached septic tank as well? Or how does that go? I mean, is that something the health department's looking at, or how do you address that?
They would most likely be a detached septic system. If it was a separate unit like that, who would...
It doesn't have to, though. I mean, you wouldn't require that, but you should have the ability to look at that when that comes up, a detached unit.
I mean, isn't it based on bedrooms, that you count that as?
Yes.
Thousand square feet.
So I guess just one thought on the conditional use question is, these are controversial items. You know, if we're going to have a room full of people here, it's probably a conditional use permit. My question is kind of on this individual one, and we've had lots of these that have been controversial over the year, over the years. On this particular one, it seems like we're having a big reaction to this. Hey, let's take this out of the proposed. We've had, you know, Cherry Peak and storage units and a number of different things that were that, but we have taken the action of, hey, let's yank this out of the code or the conditional uses allowed. And so I guess that's the concern I have going into this is that if we set a precedent and every time we get a room full of people that are mad, we yank the use out of the code, I think that's a problem. I think we need to be smart about what we put into those conditional uses and really think about the potential downstream effects of that. But I think we need to be careful about reacting to those things. You know, I was thinking about, if you took a poll of residents of Cache County and said, is Beaver Mountain a value to the, you know, do you support Beaver Mountain? And I think you'd have a high percentage that would. But if you proposed putting Beaver Mountain up there, it didn't exist today, it would be a completely different thing, and we would have massive roomfuls of people, and it would be a challenge. So I think that goes to the, you know, the council's vision of what is it that we want the county to be in the long term? And we build those uses into that, into the code.
Well, I think the review of the airport, like what you're saying now, is the land needs to be owned and everything else, is a good path rather than striking it out. So along with what you're saying, I think that was a good come-back-and-look.
Yeah.
I think when it comes to RV campgrounds, though, and if you're going to conditional use permit them, you know, all A-10 zones.
Right.
That's a massive...
Yes.
I mean, we will see a flood of applications for something like that.
One thing that we discussed that I didn't see go any further was an overlay zone. I think Melinda brought that up, and I thought that was a great way to do that because we have, what do we call that? Mineral extraction overlay zones that can be anywhere in the county, but we can change the zone to that so you could look at each individual situation and say, oh, yeah, this makes a lot of sense to put an RV campground in this part of the county because of where it is, recreation, whatever it may be. But then it's a zoning change, and we have a lot more latitude in making those at the outset versus just precluding it from...
You will approve this.
Yeah, you shall approve or totally taking it out of the code. That's the, that's kind of my sticking point on it is, it probably makes sense. If you look at the hundreds or thousands of RVs that are in this county alone, or if you try to get a campground in the Forest Service campgrounds, you know, call up Forest Service or go online and try to get a campground spot right now, you can't get it. So there's a need for this type of, this type of operation. We just, I think we just need to be smart about where we put it and give us some tools to do that.
And to those RV zones, right? I mean, we need some of them, and you might get that initial deluge of applications, but how many of them survive?
Exactly.
Right? I mean, and no disrespect to everybody at this table, but I don't think we could really even know that, right? It's what, I think we should trust the market in some respects of if we do want to have them in the county in certain areas, and there's a huge need in some parts and not so much in another, and maybe we get an initial application, but it fails pretty quick, and then it goes away. How do we allow that to actually settle into what's really an appropriate use?
Well, these parcels, as you change them, what it does is just, all it does is increase volume of people. And we don't have the road standards to take on those volumes of people within our county.
Or what they bring on those roads.
Our city's...
Your four-wheeler in the county. Your four-wheeler or your side-by-side concentrated in that area, because that's what you take when you go RVing.
Anyway, so those are, that's kind of a big limiting factor, is that we can't, the cost of improving those roads that, you know, are shared throughout the whole of everybody in the county for their RV park.
Depending on the size.
You know, those are the things that are... To me, that's a big limiting thing is to really, are we into the development business in the county? I say not so much.
I don't think we're into the development department, but we are in a situation where there's more and more people. And if any of you have tried to get into a KOA campground or any other campground near an attraction, it's impossible. If you haven't got your, if you haven't got your date a year in advance, you won't get in. And so the demand's there. I think we also got to take into account that people have the right to develop their property, but we got to help them so that it doesn't infringe on someone else. But we really do need to expand and get, we need to get bigger. I just came from College Ward in here, and here it is, a Thursday afternoon, and 89 is so jammed right now. There's no event, there's no nothing, but you just about can't drive it. And so you're right, David, we're getting bigger and bigger, and we're getting more congested. But those things we've got to deal with, and it's going to get worse, and so we need to look at it and deal with it.
And I look at it...
The point I look at is if you put an RV, when I'm RVing in the mountains, I'm at the place I want to recreate. So if I put an RV out in an A-10, do I just stay there to recreate? No, I still got to move and go somewhere to recreate. And that's the impact we're talking about, what brings to there, is my view. Right? Because if I'm out there RVing, but I want to go to the mountain, then I'm going to take my four-wheeler or my UTV and drive to the mountain. And is that what we want to encourage?
I think it really depends what kind of recreation you're looking at.
Exactly.
And then there's plenty of recreation in the valley that, you know, doesn't involve the mountains as well. One of the things that I look at is, you know, as we've gone through this Envision Cache process, we've looked at, hey, we want to preserve open space. We want to look at how do we preserve the farm feel even if we're not able to make farmers really profitable here. Some of these things, whether it's RV or something totally different, a business that can take a corner of a farmer's property and provide an income to allow that farmer to continue to do their ag part, I think can be a big part of preserving open space. So it's development, but it also could be used as a way to preserve ag as well.
I have a question. Is any consideration given to these RV parks for a time limit? Or let's say somebody moves their trailer in, and they want to make that their residence now, and...
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Our code definition of a campground is 30 days, and that includes RVs. I will say, however, and it's an important question that falls in inquiries for an RV campground that we received following the approval of the Holleridge Campground CUP was inevitably the question of could we put tiny homes? We're talking about more permanent foundations and such, and so they're just looking for, and understandably so, they're looking for a place to put horse housing. And I worked with a coworker in Leighton, they moved from Arizona, and they lived for about a year in an RV campground, decided to buy a trailer because they felt that they weren't getting good value out of their home rental. And maybe that's one reason it's hard to find an RV campground site to reserve the recreations because many of them are relaxed in terms of whether the city cares or not or has rules or not. They do, many of them allow for more than 30 days.
Right.
Does that one on, anybody know if that one on 1700 South has a restriction or limitation on days stayed?
I don't.
The river one doesn't, does it? There's two of them out there. There's...
It doesn't look like it does.
No.
It doesn't count there.
They're pretty much...
People lived there for years.
Yeah, so there's a living on that.
And down at the Travelodge one, why, I know people who've tried to move in and say, well, you know, three months before we got space open, they tried to get about four spaces for people that aren't coming in quick, but...
So there's no time limit on the Travelodge one?
Well, if there is in writing, they don't adhere to it.
Complaint-based.
Yeah, they can say, and then enforcement, how you getting around there?
Well, how many knock on the door and ask, how many months have you been in the site? You know, I just got here today.
Well, there's that one that's over by, if you look at where like Legacy Highway and 215 come into play down in Salt Lake, they've got a RV area there where you can bring your own RV in, but they also have kind of cabin areas that are owned by that lot that are permanent, that people can rent. So I know there's a need for that as well, and I don't know if people live in those, you know, for three, four, five, six months where they're trying to get permanent housing, but it seems like we can look to them to see how they've adjusted that, where you have folks that can maybe bring their own place, or if you have some more permanent-type housing, they've got some cabins that are there year-round and never move from those spaces.
Interesting. Yeah, I think the, you know, contractors, additional hospital workers that come and work for three weeks straight and go back to Boise where their primary hospital base is, contractors from out of state that come to work on a major project, they could spend a lot more money at a hotel or less in a more permanent kind of campground setting with an RV. They'd look to these campgrounds to fill that market.
Is there any others in this county that people are aware of other than the 1700 South and then the one at the...
Travelodge.
Travelodge.
There's a few little ones here and there. Well, that's a good question.
There's one in Franklin, and it's kind of an eyesore, but it's right on the road.
Right on the Coverbury.
Right, right if you're coming into Franklin's community on the west side.
It's a little more of a traditional trailer park.
Yeah, but there's a lot of RVs in there.
Several years ago, when they were putting that gas line, we, gas line, remember the, out there by Heritage.
North Logan.
They came in and they were all ready to, they laid it all in, put all the con, do it, and they were electrical all the way through, and just a few people came because I think they got their work done a lot faster than predicted. They expected it would be more than, more years, but then right after that, then it just died.
Yes, that's true.
But there were some legal issues that came up.
Yeah, I think there were some legal issues, and it was shut down.
Legal and family, so. I remember that one, but I don't remember ever getting up and running.
Well, a big part to me comes...
There were people there.
If you're out in A-10 and you got all these RVs there, how does septic work? Or what are we doing on that? Aren't we addressing that as well?
And we'll discuss that tonight.
That's really the reason why.
So what does Mayor Harker say on that for RVs and septic?
It's actually state code.
Is it?
If they have more than one trailer, they have to provide a septic system and a water system.
And that's why, that's why it's coming back. That's why the appeals board sent it back to the Planning Commission person.
But that's why I wondered how you would address, to know how big a septic is or whatever else on an RV.
And it speaks to the scale of operation of being able to invest a costly water system, septic system. And it speaks to the, uh, scale of operation, being able to invest a costly water system, septic system or sewer system.
Just, uh, since we've got health department here. A sewer system, that's what, I think that's what it's called, isn't it? Is a wastewater system. Could be a septic system, right? You could, you could design a septic system to handle multiple units like that.
We can do it at River River, up to five thousand gallons a day, and when it exceeds that, it goes to the state department.
So how many would that, how many, like, for this RV was what, sixty-five units that it could have maxed out at?
It would have been definitely over five thousand gallons.
See then, years ago, Xanabu Lodge was going to propose to do something, and they were gonna be on septic, and yet it was near the Logan River. So that was the whole reason of denying that one, was it not?
Like water was the other one, city wouldn't give them water.
Right, and it was being close to the Logan River, so those two things held pretty strong in that.
No, and it was, it was multifamily, it was, it was a big multifamily development as well, and it didn't fit into envire and. There was a lot stacked against that one.
Plus, didn't you dot own part of the parking lot or the frontage of that or something?
I think at that time there wasn't a turn lane yet, now there is, that can access that property.
I'm still, I'm still, uh, curious, how many, how many separate RVs could you have in a septic before it hasn't got the capacity to receive the water?
You probably would plan on about, I think it's two to three gallons per site per day.
Five thousand's the state limit.
Fifteen, fifteen twenty.
That's what he said.
That's the threshold.
The threshold before it goes to the state.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, okay, after five, yeah, okay, because you could, in multiple, you'd have tanks on three ends or four corners of the property.
And then. And of course, RVs are self-contained too, typically, and so, um, you know, uh, those of us that have RVs or whatever, if you go to a campground, you may or may not have a hookup, and so, and if you don't, then you're driving to wherever the dump station is to empty out.
Right, but they said like tents, you know, what about people in tents?
Do till voice got way and you have a latrine tent. Struggling dirt, remember that?
After about three days, everybody wants to go in.
So what is, what is the direction of, I mean, do you guys want, do you guys want these campgrounds or?
It will change. It will change an area and it'll change it fast.
Really?
It will. Uh, Ryrie, heading up Snake, there, there are, there's several ranches, Seven N Ranch is one. That literally has been taken over by. I think they've got like sixty-five to seventy RV hookups and. And then they have little cabin sites and everything. Yes, they have a field, uh, they're next to High Sea.
Yeah. I used to put in a little fly fishing there all the time.
Yeah, but anyway, all that, but that's changed that area, and now you're seeing a lot of those things. So what used to be, you know, typical ag, uh, now everyone complains when he's out there with the swath or cutting grass. Their eyes are all puffy, you know, and they can't pop the pills fast enough.
But those areas have another draw, like you down in Sevier County, and down in Maysville, if you ever drive down to there. And there must, there's five or six huge RV parks, well, in the winter, say, who in the world would come here? Then you come back there in the, in the early spring or the fall, and they are packed, license plates from everywhere, because there's a thousand miles of trails you can go to from right there. But in Cache County, we don't have those back trails, and we don't have the fishing like you're talking about, so.
There's a little golf course too. I mean, don't forget, don't forget that nine hole.
Little nine hole.
Golf courses are just, you know, didn't have the cows to run over.
Part two or part three.
But. We don't have that draw that's gonna give you other reasons for coming with your.
So our biggest, our biggest need would be for the construction or people passing?
Yeah, and a quick overnight recreation, come and see grandma, grandpa on our way to Jacksonville. We stop with the RV, we're here two nights, and, and we go on. But then you go back to the, yeah, the industrial side of it, and here's a big building going in, this guy's gonna live here for six months to a year, and, uh, he's got an RV, that's, that's the way they, those guys kinda work.
But don't we also have a tourism bureau? I mean, don't we have, aren't we promoting people to come up here and see a play and?
But then that's where I get down to density. Just like what you said, your number of RVs, RVs there, you've upped the density, so do you look at zoning as to where you let an RV go? I mean, you're trying to say, are you two, stay close to a municipality? Could we say the same thing if you are going to address an RV park, it stays something, I mean, yeah, that takes away from Newton and Benson and some of the other areas, but just like Brady is saying, what do we want? What's the field for, what's going out there? I mean, just like Dave said, if you do it out there, then the A-ten takes a different approach to me, the agricultural zone.
I think that's where that overlay zone can really come in though, because then it's a zoning change, then you can say, hey, does this meet the character of the, of the area? Yeah, this makes sense.
It's not gonna meet the character of any area though, I think we have to decide. Like if you're willing for it to change that way, like Beaver Mountain, this could resort.
It still gives you some say rather than him signing up the CUP and it's in camping.
Yeah, you do, yeah.
Right, and so I'm saying, like, I just think, to your point of Beaver Mountain, you know, when you first proposed that, everybody's gonna say no. And yet, twenty years down the lit road, people, a lot of people are gonna be really grateful that someone said yes.
There, you know, I, I, whites down there, you know, if they, if they wanted to put a, a few RV spots in there for, and I know they have lodging and things like that. But a few RV spots, would that, would that greatly impact the area? Probably not, or, um, you know, any of the, the areas along the mountains there. I, I don't know, I think just the, we'd have to look at it as the, what is this area, what's the character of that area? Is it going to dramatically change that? Maybe you have a scale, and you say, we don't do these things over X size.
So, so could it almost be, as, as I'm thinking about it, right, most of these RV parks like High Sea, Ryrie, Idaho, where you're talking about. You're pretty much where you're gonna recreate, to your point, Nolan, you're, you're right there. But most of the valley floor, I mean, we can talk about these RV parks up in the mountains, but there, that's not where people are coming to y'all as the planning commission. They're coming on the valley floor. So it's more as a general rule leaning toward housing in, in a lot of ways. And, and maybe more transitional and long-term, but not, you know, I'm moving there forever, but I'm gonna be there because I'm a traveling nurse or I've got a construction project or, or I'm looking for something.
Or building a home.
Or building a home. So we're gonna look for folks, I mean, when we're permitting these things in Cache County, we can talk about recreation, but, you know, no offense to Cache Junction, but, you know. I'm not, I'm not riding my, my side by side through Cache Junction every day for, so we're looking at it, it's gonna be taxing our infrastructure to, to Councilman Erickson's point, a lot of roads, a lot of, of that type of stuff that we need to look at when we're looking at these, rather than recreation type deals where people are gonna be in and out and, and not taxing the, the infrastructure we have from a travel standpoint.
What, what about, um, you know, you have the RV park, then all of a sudden they decide, okay, let's put a racetrack in, you know, a go-kart racetrack and all of that kind of stuff. Pretty soon, there's a draw there, and so people are going to want to go there. So, you know, have we considered any of that? Cache Junction, you know, maybe they figure out that's a good place to put a go-kart place or a trail riding trail or whatever, so you know.
Amusement, amusement park.
Yeah, an amusement park, like Lagoon, you know?
The corn maze.
Uh, yeah, really. So you know, there's a, I think you need to look at, consider that too, because it is a possibility that people will put something there to make a draw for their RV park.
That, you know, ties to, I was just gonna reference the definition of a recreation facility or the campground. It, it provides a few examples, but it doesn't limit what that recreational facility could be. The last sentence says, term recreational facility includes, but is not limited to the following, ski facility, you mentioned Beaver Mountain, golf course and campground, but there could be other uses, and then the impacts of those uses would need to be looked at. And so, uh, to Chris's earlier point, what's the fit generally in A-ten compared to the FR forty and the things? Key facility, golf course potentially more a fit in the valley floor, but, um, it, I think it's clear based on recent experience that recreational facility as well as agritourism needs careful looking and learning from our experiences.
Yeah, I think, I think in the A-ten zone, scale is what matters, and that's what people are gonna react to. They're, if we're, I, I mean, I love the idea of supporting our farmers and giving them an option. If they wanna have an RV site that they rent out, one, one RV site's really not a significant impact on, I, I don't think, on our infrastructure. But a sixty-seven unit RV campground certainly is of impact to the neighborhood or whatever. Uh, that probably belongs in a different zone. Commercial is, is a great option, I think, in the valley. Go through the rezone process and have commercial, uh, have RV campground permitted in the commercial zone or something like that.
I'm gonna propose something that we shift gears and go to water while Will's here before we run out of time, so, because I think that's a big one too.
So, uh, do you like to set this up?
I, I just had one last quick idea that if, if, if the people or the powers that be decide that we wanna pursue the campgrounds. Uh, I know like with the dog bill, there's a limit on how many dogs you could have in a kennel, or you could have up to six. And then if you have more than six, then you gotta go to a commercial kennel. I don't know, and I don't know how, I was thinking as a property owner's rights, sometimes there's the scale, you know, if you don't have at least fifteen or twenty, it's not practical financially. I don't know where that would be on a campground, but that is one thought too, that if we did it in layers, uh, you know, more to kind of support the ag side if somebody was wanting to do that, or even like whites out there, if you said that, you know, ten or less trailers kinda meet these requirements, but was you saying that you guys figured two to three hundred gallons a day?
Requires a rezone if you're gonna be.
Well, I think you still need to look at it either way, with, somewhere there.
Yeah, and that was like fifteen to twenty trailers.
Self-correction on that, it's a hundred and twenty-five gallons.
Hundred and twenty-five gallons, so you.
Forty units, up to forty units.
Forty units. Yeah, 'cause, 'cause that, that in itself would help us a lot, that would eliminate, I mean, to get blindsided kind of in a way like the Smithfield bill has. But I think there's a lot of other factors there too that kind of. That was, well, if you won't let us do this, then we're gonna throw this at you.
That's a good point. I, I think that's a great thing.
And I, I really think that was feeding a lot of that, because if Smithfield City would have taken them in, we wouldn't be talking to them.
Right.
Well, and then he's probably saying too, if I got this, I'm gonna do thirteen, I got the cost, and I don't break even, so I'm gonna go.
That, that was my only thought, so I'm, I'm fine going to water, but I just was kinda thinking that if we had, you know, a minimum or a maximum that, you know, kinda fit these requirements, and then if it's greater than that, I would propose that we even look at rezoning, because it doesn't really fit.
And I, and I agree with that, just with the word of caution, that if we rezone, you know, if we put that in a commercial or an industrial, and then that place fails, then we got everything else that goes along that's a permitted use with, with that zone.
Water and land use.
I'm glad these are easy meetings.
All right, moving on, water and land use.
Nolan, would you like to introduce? I can share my thoughts by way of introduction.
Well, I'm just sitting here, we got one tonight, and are you two that if it went to the city, then the city deals with water? If it doesn't go to the city and it passes, you're throwing seventeen wells into a concentrated area. We're talking about water conservancy and everything else. Usually, we all know the planning and zoning, we can't talk about water or resist on that, so that's why I want somebody from the Department of Water to help us to see how, what can we do as far as a county to start conserving water? Are we looking at wells? What do we can do from there? Does that help you understand what we're looking for help from here in county standpoint?
A little bit. So.
This is Will Atkins. Doctor Will Atkins.
I'm Will Atkins, I'm the regional engineer for the State Division on Water Rights here in Logan. So if I understand your, your question, you're talking about conditional use permits, and so if somebody wants to put in a seventeen lot subdivision, and.
Well, we've had many that comes in, I mean, here, here a while ago out in Trenton, how many, how many homes was that?
Thirteen, sixteen?
Well, Smithfield's been, Smithfield was hot, on the northwest corner of Smithfield was hot.
So as a county, we get to say, okay, that meets the everything, but then people come to us and they always say, well, what about water? My well's this, my well's this, but really, that's up to the state. But yet, as a county, I'm sitting here saying, if we don't start addressing water conservancy or something, or how do we do that? We're all gonna be wondering what's coming out of our tap.
So.
What's been the county used?
Yeah, so we're really not, we're really away from the CUP now, it's just growth and wells and number of wells and a number of places and everything else. Does that make sense?
In other words, the county is fueling a litigation pool. This guy's well's going dry, this one's going dry, and that one, because we've allowed so much development into an area that they've all punched holes. And it's affecting.
And we've generally deferred to the state.
Right.
We said, hey, it's, it's a civil thing that you take care of.
Well, there's another one brewing right now on the Box Elder Cache line, up there, dry, dry lake area. Them people come in here and told us, everybody that come in here told us how deep they've had to go, how the waters quit, and now you look at what they're building up there.
So is that the one, uh, on Sardine?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the state salt shit.
Okay. Um, it's, it's interesting to have this discussion. Yesterday, I was actually meeting with the Brigham City, Brigham, Tremonton Board of Realtors, anyway, similar kinds of questions because of the demand that they're facing. It's a little bit different situation, but, uh, we had an interesting discussion, because they're getting, um, subdivision requests for twenty lot subdivisions, uh, request for a six fourplex, six fourplex units on wells, six individual wells. The difference though is Cache County, we have good watershed, we have good, um, aquifers, Oxella County does not. And so some of these wells are twenty foot deep wells that they can give, because they can't get the deep wells, they don't get the water. Anyway, so, so, but they're just trying to meet demand, and, and their, their county has a lot of small or large private water companies. As opposed, you know, they have municipalities too, but they have these water companies that, that take on a plan, and hence only function to a degree. And, uh, and, and again, water is a limiting factor to development. So for Cache Valley, Cache County, we have a groundwater management plan that's pretty restrictive. Uh, if you have a parcel of land that's not been split or subdivided since September of nineteen ninety-nine, when we got our policy, you can file for a single family domestic well on that parcel. And you can still look at them for localized interference, but you can get an approval if you're not subdividing the property. Uh, if you are subdividing, then you have to go about it a different way. You have, you cannot appropriate new water. You can only change historic water rights. And so there is a small market of those irrigators who are drying up lands and selling their water rights such that people can do a five lot subdivision out of the county, or a lot split, and get two homes, I get that question all the time. People buy a parcel and then to fund their development, they split it so that somebody else. Anyway, so those are called change applications, and so, um, the question though, I, I mean, I'm well aware of the Smithfield situation, uh, it's sitting on a great aquifer. And so I can only look, my jurisdiction is to look at the. the impact to existing water rights. And so, if you're sitting on a great aquifer, you're not gonna be impacting anybody by drilling a well. And so, if I'm looking at just water, which is my jurisdiction, I'll approve that application. And they drill a great well and it doesn't impact anybody. Okay? But if you take that seventeen lot subdivision and place it in Petersburg, I guarantee you, you're gonna have problems. Petersburg doesn't have good wells. They're deep, they're in a geologic formation that's pretty limiting, and even may have water quality concerns. And so, so, we're just looking at the water. And so, if they can get the water approved, that's one of your requirements when you're coming to the county to get your subdivision or to get your building permit, is to have proof of culinary water. One thing I'll mention, because again, Box Elder County is really struggling with this, and especially because they have these shallow wells. I mean, you got seventy thousand acres of irrigated farm ground, and so if you drill a well, even with tobacco, you're gonna hit water. Now, it may be loosely filtered canal water that's coming out of Cutler Reservoir. But if you wanna drink it, you can. And so, that's a problem, I think. It's, I think it's a health departmental problem, but if you're willing to do that. And so, so, one of the things Box Elder County has done is they require, you know, I got perfect examples of sixteen lot subdivisions that have come in there and they say, well, we'll have each lot owner on one and a half acres each drill their own well. And so, the county has now said that that subdivision is no different than any other subdivision that has a single well supplying everybody. They're requiring that you drill the well and test the water before they'll approve the subdivision.
Do you know, things like this, I want ideas in that, so that we have some scope or something to give consideration. Because as a county, first thing we hear is, we approved a large number of home subdivision. I mean, then they drill the house, they drill the well, south of Iron Van is a very good point of this. Built the house, then they drilled the well, first drill, nothing. Then they come to the next one, they're like, well, how come the county approved it? We're like, well, we've tried to tell you that there's no water issue from us. But if we can incorporate something, 'cause I've always thought I'd rather see one hole poked in the ground that distributes to five homes or six homes, sixteen, fifteen, whatever the number is. So, that's why I wanted to foresee this talk and talk about that. And if you did that, is there a limited number of homes that can go on one well? Or how do you do that?
Yeah, is there a number of homes for, for wells?
Yes, so, the language is kinda silly. It says fourteen connections for twenty-five people for sixty days of the year. However, they also have wording in there that says each connection is so many people, and it ends up being eight connections. So, if you have eight connections with three people in it, or three and a third or whatever, then it ends up pushing it to that twenty-five person threshold until they say that's a public water system. Once something becomes a public water system, there's a lot of additional costs. You have to have a water operator that's certified. You're looking at zones, protection zones. You gotta keep septic systems out of those protection zones. A lot of money into testing, it quickly becomes very expensive.
Sounds like, sounds like, excuse me, like seven, seven or less homes.
And even then, if it's proven that there's twenty-five more people, and that comes to light, and the State Division of Water becomes aware of that, and they're gonna look into that and say, okay, if you have twenty-five people or more.
Five to seven.
What about, is there a difference though between grandfathered? What happens if it's a system that's been in existence? So, say we've got a parcel of property that's been in existence for seventy-five years. And somebody comes in and purchases his ground that that system's on and wants to put a bunch of homes on it. Does that change?
No, the Division of Water becomes very clear that grandfathering isn't in their language. If they're aware of it, then it needs to be a public water system. Now, maybe if they weren't aware of it for seventy years, then they sold it. In the process of selling that, it came to light that, oh, it meets the definition of needing to be a public water system. They're gonna require that it be, that it meets that.
For, I mean, I think what we see a lot of times, I mean, I think what we've been willing to approve on any of these rezones is a small number of lots.
Exactly.
A lot split or a two or three homes kinda thing. If, you know, if it's a lot split, you already have an existing home, an existing well. Is it possible for this new lot to also use that well?
It is. Also, they would file a change application to change and use their source as the existing well.
Okay.
And, and to that point, I think it's pretty easy for, for y'all to sit here today and think, okay, Petersburg sucks for water. That's pretty easy. The concern maybe many people are having is, Smithfield's great, but if we drill fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty new wells, how are you managing those aquifers or even looking at it to say? Here's kind of the tipping point we're looking at, where we're gonna get uncomfortable that now a really great aquifer goes to questionable.
Well, good case in point, I mean, north west Smithfield. And so, you have multiple wells going in, but what's the difference between that and Smithfield City drilling their own municipal wells and supplying fifty or sixty homes? And so, the standard is they have to give a reason to believe that it can be done without impairing existing water rights. And so, if impairment is not an artesian well that now longer explodes, you can pump water. You know?
Let me give you an example of how we, what we experienced down in College and Young Ward. Those lots down in there are pioneer, they are pioneer lots. There's some of the original lots in Cache Valley. Early, early nineteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds, a lot of those wells were punched down about a hundred feet, and they got a little two inch pipe in them. When they first went in, there was good artesian pressure in them. Now, we're at a situation that the college irrigation company turns on their hundred and thirty foot shallow well. After about a month, all those old pioneer wells start to dry up. And as you've tested it and as we have looked at it, the pressure in the ground has went down. I, I don't know if I use considerably, but we're talking eight or ten feet in, in fifty years. Evan Olson and I went down to the state and started complaining, but I think it was all because Nibley was gonna punch a great big fifteen or eighteen inch well down there to water all of a part of Nibley where they were gonna grow. And we said, hey, we have reason to believe that they are affecting our water right. And so, we oppose it and you still grant it. And so, what the state told us point blank is your well has now overran its, like a car. They said, after so many years, your car wore out and it has to be replaced. Well, you're in a situation that your well no longer is in a, in a situation where it can provide water for your house, and so, we will issue you another permit and you just drill deeper. And so, then we said, well, if that's the case, the person that has the most money and can drill the deepest is the one that's gonna win. State said yes, and so, kinda keep that in the back of your mind. The, the pumping of the water out of the Cache Valley aquifer is lowering the overall pressure in the aquifer. And last year, my mother's well went dry again because we pumped so many, so many days out of that shallow well, we had to finally shut it off. And the only way to provide water there is we had to get a big water tank and take a garden hose and put it in the, in the house pump and, and pump water. So far, it hasn't went dry this year. I don't think it will because there's a lot of more water in the fall and then in the spring. But the water being pumped out has an effect. And even though Will says that you're on a wonderful aquifer down there in College and Young Ward, we're on a wonderful aquifer, but it has went down, and we can still get a four or a six inch well and dip it down and put a submersible pump, and we pump all the water we want. But it is down. Now, if I said anything wrong, Will, isn't that kinda the way it's been?
Well, I'm correct in just a little.
Just a little.
And I'm a neighbor to, I'm from College Ward too. I have an artesian well myself.
Sure.
And so.
You're about twenty feet lower in the aquifer down there where you live.
Yeah, it's a matter of elevation.
Right.
And so, there is a court case that went to the Utah Supreme Court in the nineteen sixties. It's called Wayman versus Murray City. And Murray City down in Salt Lake Valley had artesian wells, and these people had artesian wells. And, and Murray City drilled wells and pumped their aquifer to the point where these artesian wells kept flowing. And the Supreme Court found in favor of Murray City and said, yeah, it's reasonable. But it, it, it kinda went both ways. But it basically said, it's not reasonable to think that you'll never have to pump your well. I mean, it's a blessing to have an artesian well, but artesian pressure is not guaranteed. And if your well's not of a size that you can put in a pump, then maybe you need to re-drill the well so that you can, but the water is there. And so, the terminology is that your well's gonna dry. The fact is, it's dropped to the point that it's below your suction. And so, the water is still there, you just need to go after it.
So, is there a point where we would ever get to a value where, even if it would drop low enough, that we would have a problem pumping that out, right? I mean, maybe you have an artesian well that'd go dry, but okay, you gotta drill it deeper, you gotta pump it out.
And it's not that you even have to drill it deeper, you just need a sized casing that you can put a submersible. They don't make a two inch submersible well. It's gotta be four inch or bigger.
It's hard to get a submersible pump down a four inch well too.
But you can also suck water from seventeen feet. So, so, but the USGS monitors groundwater conditions throughout the state. Cache Valley has a monitoring program, they monitor wells in Cache Valley, and they haven't significantly dropped. There, there may be some seasonal fluctuations, especially due to some of the irrigation wells. But the aquifer is not significantly dropped, and we're not pumping significantly more than we ever have.
It'll cost more, but we can sustain growth, water-wise.
I think so.
Okay, so, back to your point on what Box Elder's doing and what we look at as a planning zoning when we see a subdivision come in. So, from your perspective, fifteen wells is no different than three big wells that feed fifteen houses.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
But from a county standpoint, and Taylor, this comes to you, would we be able to do something like what Box Elder is saying and saying, okay, you proved there's water before there's sixteen houses here that do that, or is that, is that on that case that Box Elder's doing?
So, the reason I think behind Box Elder doing it, number one is a water quality issue. If you're expecting everybody to put in, in a sixteen lot subdivision, sixteen twenty foot deep wells, and you're gonna have sixteen septic systems, and it's all on ground that's irrigated by Bear River Canal Company, you probably have a water quality problem. And so, if, if you're asking the developer to drill that well and show there's quantity of water and quality sufficient for a subdivision, that's the purpose behind that. And much in Cache Valley, you don't have that same problem. And even though there may be some shallow water, for the most part, you're going through a hundred feet of clay to get anything in Cache Valley. That seals out your septic tanks, gives you some artesian pressure that's upwards, and so, you don't have the septic problem, you don't have the canal problem that Box Elder County has.
Do you see the issue? We're trying to say is, if we approve a large number subdivision, two people hit water, three people don't, and the first thing they do is come back to the county and say, why did you approve that? There's where I'm saying, and that's why I wanted this discussion, and Chris, you've got some points. Also, and Taylor, I'd like to see if we could look at something like that as far as if a large number of homes are going in.
Or a public water system.
Yeah, so that we, they got proof.
I throw out a couple things. So, in my opinion, people I've seen, it's a different discussion on the east bench compared to the west bench, right? West bench, I have received, and even in the Young Ward, College Ward area last summer, I received several complaints to, oh, my well's dried up and my neighbor didn't. I've heard a lot of that last year. In Box Elder County, and I think you all kinda alluded to this a little bit, something interesting that the Bear River Water Conservancy District is doing, has done and is doing, is they gather two water sources and then they pipe it quite a distance, and they serve these communities along the way. And I know Tim Witt spoke with the Cache County Water Conservancy District here about a month ago about maybe exploring that a little bit, you know, maybe for the east end of the valley, there's not a lot of sense in that. We have some pretty established water sources and public water systems. But in some of these areas that haven't got that established, maybe there's some value to doing something similar, and that's down the road a ways, but, you know, and then you have one entity that's kinda covering this, seven different public water systems. You have an operator that knows what the state wants and how it needs to be run. And then, you know, maybe you're able to have, you know, these little larger subdivisions tied to one or two water sources, and that's where you can get the west end to grow a little bit more responsibly.
One thing you gotta remember, when you punch a hole down in the ground and you file for a water for a home, there is a finite amount of water that you're allowed to really take out of there. You don't just put the hole in the ground and take all, well, some people do. But anyway, just, you know, just start taking everything, but that's the, you know, regulation on that is, is tough. But there is a, there is an amount, and that's what equates five individual wells or one big one can equate to the same amount of water. Now, as far as the, east-west of Bear, it seems like Bear River. As soon as you hit the Bear River, boy, stinky water, except for, yeah, same, same down there.
We get ours from Smithfield.
You, you can see the color of the homes. You drive down through there and says, oh, okay, yep, good, bad well, good well, bad well. You know, and so.
Iron on the side.
Yeah, it pretty well is determined that that Bear River is very distinct at that, with what we've seen.
What, so, I mean, what, you know, we, when we get proposals from Petersburg, I, I guess what the county has done thus far is to say, if you get a water right from state, you're good to go. Which is fair, I mean, that's fair enough.
It doesn't deter quality.
But, that's right.
Well, not only that, and it doesn't guarantee you water. Only you've got is a permit to use water.
We've sort of washed our hands of the situation.
I'm a little concerned when we issue a building permit, just because the Division of Water Rights in Utah says, yeah, you, you, you can qualify for water, but that don't mean they found real wet water. And we, we know people around that have not found water after they got their home built. So, they get the home built, and then they start working on the well driller, and they finally get the well drilled, and then they can't find any water, and there they sit with that home.
Yeah, I think, you know, my, my question is like, what, what can we do as a county to, you know, have additional scrutiny, if you will, or something to that effect for, you know, a subdivision that wants to come in in Petersburg? If they wanna expand the existing subdivisions up there, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and if you're looking at something small, you know, maybe three homes to a well, but that gets complex too, because one person wants to keep up on the maintenance of the well, and one person says, if they broke, don't fix it. And you end up with very significant civil issues there. And, and so, the only way to really remediate that is to have it be a little bit broader and have it be a public water system that's got a little bit more government to it.
Well, I don't wanna get into what we saw last year in Park City. A farmer who has an established water right with a well, he's pumping and irrigating, and then the city who is short, I mean, we all heard that in the news. And that's why part of this discussion is, can we talk about water conservancy as well? I mean, just like Dave said, you're, you're given one point three acre feet of water per well, but should we be saying, hey, is it wise to sprinkle here? Is it wise to have this size of lot? Like, understand and all of that, you're doing that, but I just want this open for discussion. So, we're talking about, we're gonna grow, we all see that. But do we talk conservancy? Do we talk, like, we all get uneasy when the big request for subdivision comes in, 'cause the next thing we hear is, all. Because the next thing we hear is, all the citizens who come are like, well, my well's this, my well's this. And we have to say, hey, we can't listen to you. And I just don't think that's the right answer to citizens.
And maybe an option is like what Box Elder County is doing, which is...
Bingo. You can't get a building permit unless you prove the water right.
Can we do that in this county or what?
So, uh, I would have to look to check to make sure. But broadly, land use is a local issue. And land use is, um, regulated on the, the local level. So, um, barring something in the state code, I'd say the county has wide latitude to do what they think is necessary.
I know you love hypotheticals on that, but, uh, on all this stuff. But, so, so say, um, we, we approved the zoning change and we said that you have to be able to prove the well that it, that it has adequate water. And then we, then we don't approve the, the subdivision for whatever reason. Would that expose the county to, to them saying, we've, we've, we've expended X amount of dollars to prove this well and you didn't approve this?
Well, I mean, um, everybody takes on risk when they go on to develop a property. And, um, it would, you'd have to define what it means, what adequate means and what prove means. And so, if they have to prove that they can pump out X feet of water or that it's, you know, a certain quality or...
That's the risk that they take.
Right. So, that's, that's the risk that you take as a developer. And sometimes the fact is that you start developing, the development goes.
But, let's say they did...
Similar to like road improvements.
But, but let's say they developed the water and the water's good. They've got good water. But, we determined for whatever reason that we don't want to approve the subdivision. Would that expose the county to them saying, well, you know, you led us to believe that we're, you know, you gave us a zoning change on this and we expended that money?
So, you, you say I love hypotheticals. The standard lawyer answer is, well, it depends. It depends on the circumstances. And so, if you, you know, approve and approve and approve, and then, you know, at some point you deny due to a different issue, then that's a separate issue. And then you get into whether or not the decision was made arbitrarily and commercially. And so, but if you have a ration, a genuine rationale, and they don't meet some qualification for some reason, then that's the blade that you stand on. So...
No, I mean, if, if we have a list of conditions that we applied to it, right, they, they only have to not meet one of them for them to not be approved.
It's, it's a really good question, discussion. And one component could be in terms of, it depends. If, if it's already zoned and it's, say, RU five or RU eight ten, then it's an administrative approval, right? And it's, one of the requirements is to prove the water, then yes, it would have to be approved. If it's a rezone, and if the county wanted to explore some form of development agreement, um, earlier on, then that's a kind of different situation. Prove this, provide this information. Leads to a question, and Nate Dowd was describing someone that had been in the, I guess, the geologic groundwater study for years. He says, has armfuls of roll-up drawings, or many drawings, showing what he believes to be where aquifers and water abundance is. Sounds like you're mapping that as well. And I'm just curious with our...
I'm not mapping it, but he's probably referring to Dr. Bobo.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Bobo, retired USG geology professor, has, has, um, written opinions on some of these applications in defense of, say, a protest. And so, uh, we, I actually took him out to a drill site on, in that, uh, Nautica subdivision. And he was, they'd already dug the foundation. He was fascinated by the geology. And so, you know, he's a, he's a student of geology and he was just, it was good to pick his brains. And he had, he was a very good well driller who was drilling the well. And so, the interaction was very insightful. I, I think though that, you know, one thing that you might look at doing, because you al- already require proof of culinary water. But, what does that mean? What does it mean, proof of culinary water? Does it mean that, you know, if, if it were a subdivision, you'd have to have some kind of a certification or something like that? For a single family well, maybe not. And so, so, you may ask, you may tell them, you have to drill the well and show us that you got a good water channel or something like that. One of the things you have to deal with though is, right now, well drillers are booked until next year. I mean, they're coming out of southeast Idaho and they're, they're drilling, but they're booked up for a year in advance. You know, and so, so if somebody that wants a subdivision approved, it, you know, that would slow them down. I don't know if you wanna slow them down or not. I always tell people though, drill the well before you build the house.
One more time?
I've seen people...
All the time.
In stereo?
People, lots of money because they already built a million dollar house. You know, I've seen bad cases. And so, it's a good thing to drill the well before you build a house. But, but you're just protecting the, the public so, so to speak, because you want good quality water, you know? But, but in answer to that though, if you're having a subdivision, a, a developer can drill one well and say, this is how deep, this is how much water, this is the quality of the water, and then have an engineering report that says, I can expect the same with all the rest of the homes. And so, there's ways to deal with that. But, but I, I, I think that you need to, you know, because if somebody, most of the people that come in my office, this is the first and only time they're ever gonna drill a well and build a house. And so, they're novices at this. They don't know what they're looking at. And so, Petersboro's very attractive until you have to drill a well.
But, they're also, they're listening to developers. They're listening to the people who are selling lots. I remember the, the town that was proposed up there, that you had all the arsenic. Oh, we can get through that. You know, you're, you're never gonna have kids, but hey, you know, we can get through it.
So, it sounds almost, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a matter of scale of what we're talking about. It's the same thing, everything else. So, if we're looking at individual, if I have an A ten, I'm gonna build one house. I can do a whole bunch of stuff. I got lots and lots of flexibility. But, once you get to a subdivision standpoint, you go to a public water, uh, operator, you got a whole bunch of different things. And getting people onto as much of a consistent basis as we can is, is pretty important, right? Because if you let individuals go, it's, it's completely, and, and the pressure we're gonna face is on bigger development. So, if, if, if I'm, if I'm a developer, I'm gonna try to make as much money as I can for the least amount of cost. So, I'm gonna try to get into individual wells for the greatest extent possible, even though in some total, at the back end, it should have been a public water system.
And something else that's interesting to think about, I don't know what the...
Required a certain, a certain density.
I don't know what the legal side of this is, but do people, does a private landlord have the right to drink bad water if they want? You know, there, there, there's nothing that says that they can't, to my knowledge. And so, you know, Will, I'll have someone bring samples to us. She has a little guy who says, oh, you gotta prove that the water's good before you can sell it to somebody else. Well, everybody has a different idea of what good water is. If you got somebody that's fine drinking the lightly filtered creek water, and you got someone else that, you know, they want the arsenic down into here and they want the...
If you could light it or something.
You know, everything, they have different standards. And I don't know legally what you can hold somebody to as far as water quality standards. So, if you're requiring to prove up a well and you want quality, not just quantity to be part of that, that's gonna have to be figured out.
My concern comes back to what Paul's talking about. If you're a developer and I, I buy ground and I develop it, but then I put the individual back to the point, he's gotta drill his well. So, the developer's gone because the subdivision's approved. So, there becomes that conundrum that I get concerned with. I mean, and I don't have the answer. I, that's why I asked.
And to me, that's, that's the risk that we don't take. That's the risk the landowner, the purchaser, whatever it is. That's their risk.
Buy everywhere.
Yeah.
And that's the state of view, not buy everywhere.
Whoever they're buying it from, if they're credible, if they're honest, whatever, or, you know, hear another story. I still think that is greatly their risk. If they'd be smart to go talk over in Petersboro, go talk to a few of those other people out there, you know, and, uh, I learned that once you drill a well, if it's a really good well, no, it is not a really good well. If you don't want neighbors, it's the worst weather you've ever had.
On that, I think the public water system, if, if we put a requirement, if a subdivision breaches, did you say seven, seven homes?
Eight.
Eight?
It can be.
Greater than seven, seven lots result from a subdivision. And that could be any zone. You know, you could have, you could have a hundred, a hundred acres out there and, and it would still stay in the A ten because we're dividing it into, into more than ten acre lots. If, if we put the requirement at more than eight, or more than seven homes, a public water system is required.
Then will they just come in and phase it and do six? And then three months later, oh, turns out we wanna do six more. And three months later, we decide we wanna do six more.
Go back to the original date of the, of the parcel, you know, so then, so they would, when, once they, once they broke that eighth home, then it would require that for, for all of, for all of those.
But when they come in for the second six, then you say you're now at twelve?
To me, that's...
Is that right?
So, you could put in six and then you end up with big families in there and you exceed twenty-five people for sixty days. You've met the definition too.
Oh, so, so we would just, we would just put in the, in the code, whatever the state code says for...
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to...
Requirements for a public water system.
But then you're limiting, okay?
How many children they can have?
But, but we don't necessarily, I, I, I mean, for, for planning purposes, it's far easier to say, if you, if you exceed seven homes out of an individual parcel, there needs to be a public water system.
Sure.
Whether it's required by state or, or anything.
Sure. When we met with Bear River Health and Nate Dowd, we've been nice, you know, that, that Will there, we'll continue to be a staff. And this is incredible discussion.
Sounds like maybe continuation at this point.
But, we were, uh, asking about what is a reasonable, what are reasonable assumptions for showing cluster development scenarios? Those diagrams we were sharing last, uh, meeting as it relates to general plan. And so, we were talking about shared wells and maximum and some of these issues of civil issues and how can CCNRs assist with subdivision. And then at what point would a, a public water system or body politic for sewer district and such facilitate development rights, combining into a cluster area, preserve a fairly broad area of ag land or sets of lands around it? That was kind of the context of the discussion.
In that manner, aren't we almost encouraging HOAs? And HOAs become a problem from a county standpoint of roads and infrastructure and everything else, correct?
Well, I think HOAs can work, especially if the local government's party to the HOA.
I just got called by two HOA guys today who, having attorney, voted their meeting because nobody pays fees, nobody's fixed the roads, and now they're all fighting each other and they're their own neighbors.
Most local form of government is an HOA. It's tailored to the neighborhood and you get attorneys involved and get it figured out. But that's, you know, you vote, you vote on those people and, yeah.
All right. Um, we're getting close to adjournment time. Um, thank you to everyone. I, this was very enlightening to me. I, I learned a lot. Um, any final comment on anything?
We didn't make a decision on any of it.
No, we didn't. But, we opened the... Melinda would like to say something?
Can I ask one more question? You know, when you look at like these numbers and you say like the levels haven't changed much. So, it doesn't matter if it's a drought year or a wet year?
Well, you see drought years.
It changes.
But it's not a long-term trend.
Okay, very good. Anything?
I think Will, I think what was correct in saying that the, the aquifer is not changing a lot. It's the ability that you gotta get down two or three more feet to get it and you don't have the capacity in a two inch well. And so, there's no question where my mother's house is dried up. You can sink two hundred foot well, six inch casing, and you can pump all the way, water all the way across the highway if you want. So, it's just the way it is.
Can I throw one thing out there? And this is down the road a ways. It's just a thought. Maybe it's worth discussion, maybe it's not. I know that the Cache County Water Conservancy District has talked about large storage up above Temple Ford. If there's a way that we could get where there is water to where there isn't water, similar to what the Bear River Water Conservancy District is doing, if they could pipe that over to the west end of the valley and then have, you know, different public water systems along the way like they've done in Box Elder County, I think it's a really good idea. I think it, I think it helps resolve a lot of these issues. But, I mean, that's far beyond me. I just wanna throw it out there. Uh, they seemed open to it, the Cache County Water Conservancy District. But that's down the road. In the meantime, I'm sure you gotta figure out what to do. Tell them if that is even an option.
There's huge potential in Cache Valley to take water from the east side of the valley and take it over and distribute it on the west side. Then you can really, really do some things. You can build lots of homes, put in a sewer system, and that would be what we can do. But in the conservancy district that we're, we're all starting to pay into, maybe that's possible at a future date. And that's, that's what they're for.
I've always been pushing the, just the seasonal pumping from the Bear River up past Trenton and recharge Clarkston's wells and fill up that reservoir, Newton Dam. And, you know, and just literally charging those areas up during the winter times.
It would actually be quite a cheap fix, if you ask me, for that whole west side, keeping that thing flowing. It'd be expensive, but it would be...
Well, let's put a desolization plan in when they bring the water from LA to Salt Lake. Fix that.
All right, well...
Water goes uphill for money.
Thank you to everyone. Um, we appreciate, uh, the zoning commission. And I, I am really appreciating these quarterly meetings. And if you want to continue this on our next quarterly meeting, I'll be happy to do so. Or, you know, we can be, do whatever we want. But Nolan, what do you think?
Uh, thanks to you guys for coming, Will, and that helps. But, I still think we got more discussions to go. And Taylor, I think we need to look at what Box Elder's doing. Or, all I'm saying is, let's be open and discussing this before we say crap we should've.
Yeah. Good. Very good.
The one thing, one, one other thing I'd like to make comment, it's already been alluded to here a little bit. We do appreciate our county planning and zoning.
We do.
Quite often when we look at your recommendation as to what you decided you should recommend to us, we try very, very, we, we really diligently try to follow what you've recommended. Because we, we value what your opinions are.
Uh, Gordy, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't make a plug for, you know, um, giving us a pay raise at some point.
Then we've raised, we've raised everybody else in the county, I guess we have. Are you over ten dollars a meeting?
Barely.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure all the commissioners would say, we don't need the money or whatever. But you, that's a way to show your appreciation.
We've already, we've already talked about that, for sure.
I'm on board.
Yeah.
I'm on board.
In fact, that's on our agenda coming up.
We're giving people a lot more money to do a lot less than you do, so.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thanks for coming.